... meeting. It is Tuesday, February 18th. It's just past 6:00 PM and we are so glad to see everyone here tonight. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And tonight, we have special recognitions and presentations for Jewel Williams, the 2025 winner and grand champion of the Rockdale Regional Science and Engineering Fair. Is Jewel here? Do you want to come on down to the podium? So, hi Jewel. Maria, will you introduce Jewel and tell us some of the great things that she's accomplished?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioner Smith.
Will you pull the microphones?
Sure. So, last August, I met this beautiful young lady through her mom. She asked that we would help her with a science project because she was interested in doing her project on water. So she came and along with my colleagues, Ms. Tillman and Ms. Cotton, she did a plant tour. She did a tour of the dam. And from there, she was able to collect data for her science fair. And from there, she just took it and ran. And she is the winner of the school, first place, the regional grand champion, the Thermal Fisher Award. She is now qualifying for the regionals and for the state in April. So I'll let Jewel go from there.
Hi Jewel. To-
Hi.
Hi. Thank you for joining us, especially on your break. We're glad that you saved time for us to come out tonight. Tell us a little bit about your school that you attend and what really inspired you to do this project?
Well, I go to GRDMS. And what inspired me to go to do this project was some friends came over to our house from Jackson, Mississippi. And they wanted to wash their clothes and stuff at our house. And I wondered why. So then I learned that they're having a water crisis in Jackson, Mississippi. And then some further research, I found out that in Newton, they're having problems with their pipes. So, that's right next door to here. So I was wondering, well, in the off chance that we have problems with our water, what would be the best method of filtration?
Impressive. Very good. So Maria, tell us a little bit more about the program and the process for her to win this award and recognition.
Well, the process was once she did her research and came through, she really just needed some water samples and we helped her with that. And then once she gathered the data from Ms. Cotton, who took her and through the whole filtration system of the plant, she pretty much did everything else on her own.
Excellent.
Can you tell us a little bit about your project? And also what those initials stand for for your school? Because people may not know what school that is that you go to.
Um, wait, the staff?
Yeah, the name of your school.
Oh, General Ray Davis. So, my project is about water filtration. So which out of three natural resources would be the best for filtering water? And I got to choose the natural resources because I visited Rockdale Water Resources to figure out which one would be the best based off of their filtration there.
And what was your conclusion?
Well, I decided to use like cotton balls and rice and corn husks. Because I know corn husks had high surface, yeah, high surface tension. So they would be able to pick up a lot of impurities in the water. And that rice has been known to be good for filtration. And then cotton balls as well.
So did you, what was the result of your filtration experience?
It was a little bit inconclusive because the, I should have gotten more contaminated water because I used raw water, which is somewhat near portable water. So I should have gotten like further down the line of before filtration. But that the corn husk was the most effective because it had the most studying results and it remained closest to neutral.
So should I be pouring my water through corn husks?
Well, probably not the water you have now since it is portable water, but like maybe corn husks would be the best for future purposes.
Very good to know.
Thank you, that's good to know.
And we do have a video that's showing now, just to show some of the steps and some pictures of her at the dam and at the plant, I do believe. There's Ms. Jewel. And it was hot that day. We did it on a Saturday afternoon and she was a trooper.
Excellent. That's awesome. Well, we want to make sure we get a picture of you with Ms. Flint tonight and other members who want to be in the picture so that we can make sure we send it to the newspaper.
And we do have her family here with her parents.
Oh, excellent. Can we have you stand?
Her aunt, her grandparents.
Wow, nice. Well, so glad to have all of you. We're excited to be able to recognize you tonight Jewel. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to take it now? Okay. All right, next we'll move on to public comment. And tonight, our first speaker will be George Kellecheck.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, citizens of Rockdale County. George Kellecheck, Chairperson, Rockdale Sewer Conservation District, Uproak-Moggi Basin Area Council. Two items I have in front of you this evening. I gave you a nice calendar from the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District, which Rockdale County is a part of, along with the Atlanta Regional Commission. And Janice, I know we've got a meeting on March the 12th. Hopefully you'll be in attendance for that. Will not be able to attend next week's meeting, so I wanted to get a couple of things mentioned to y'all. I'll be at the Capitol next Tuesday, the 25th, with about 200 other sewer conservationists from around the state of Georgia, talking with legislatures about additional funding for conservation. Two items I'd like to bring to point. On the George Diaz, Georgia Strategy Group contract, as mentioned in the Reimagine Rockdale for 2025, mentioned several times of getting the school system and the city involved regarding marketing activities. I think it would be a great idea to sit down with Mr. Diaz and see how we could formulate some information for the city, the school system, and the county, all three of us. Secondly, regarding the community garden, if you could table that information. I spoke with Isabel Wagner today, who's your chairperson for the Master Gardeners. Some excellent ideas there. This is a federal grant. We don't know what's going to be happening with grant funding. And so, one item that is coming up through the UGA extension, I gave you a copy of the Market Bulletin, which goes to 55,000 folks across the state. On March the 4th, the UGA Extension out of Gwinnett County will be providing an online seminar about starting a community garden.
Excellent.
Okay? So I'll make sure I get you that information. But also another funding through the DNR. They provided over $25 million in grants last year to 12 different projects. Community garden would fall under this. So we can look at that option too. So just ask you, just to slow down a little bit, let's have some good conversations. And also in there, Farmer D., associate of mine, Darren Joffe, does these type of community, these community gardens and educational pieces across the United States. Written several books, great, great resource, lives right here in Decatur. So thank you very much.
Do you know the deadline for the grant?
These are ongoing every year. 2025 has already been allotted, so it'd be 2026. But there's a lot of different avenues out there we could take a peek at.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Oh, and by the way, the Rockdale Sewer Conservation District is going to start a Young Stewards Program. So we're going to be talking with Jewel, maybe head up our board, Young Member Board for that.
Sounds like a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Dr. Darrell Hall, Pastor Hall. Nice to see you tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners Smith and Williams. I am Darrell Hall, the pastor of the Way Community Church, one of, I believe, the 300 churches in Rockdale County. But I'm not here tonight in that capacity. I am here tonight in the capacity of the one and only Boys and Girls Club in Rockdale County. I represent the club, its constituency, and the leaders from the Metro Atlanta office. And I am here for a few reasons. First of all, because we are thankful. Each of you have been our guests at the club. If we've talked to you about some of the issues that are going on and some of our plans and hopes. You have also entertained us privately in phone conversations and private meetings to give us an opportunity to have your ear and to appeal to your heart. And so we are thankful for your concern for young people and for your support in earnest, as it were, of the club. But we're also hopeful. And that is, we understand that there is a contract in place that was unanimously approved by the previous Board of Commissions that will be rescinded because there are some issues within it that we can acknowledge are probably not in the best interest of the county. And so as a good community partner, we are hopeful that we can strike a contract that is beneficial both to the county and to the club and allows you all as Commissioners to feel confident that what you hopefully will approve will go the distance to impact club members and their families. We're thankful, we're hopeful, and last of all, we are accountable. I'm the board chair and my primary job as board chair is not a governing board, it is a fundraising board. And I have heard your heart and your concern that it is our responsibility as board members to seek help from the business community and from families around Rockdale in order to help subsidize the needs of the club. And so with your help in the future contract that we hope you will approve, we are accountable, number one, to respond to you a year from now with clear data on what your investment has helped to produce, but also to show you above and beyond your investment what we as board members and community members have done to help add to that investment. I'm an alum of the Boys and Girls Club. I was a club kid from six years old to 18 years old. And when I was born, my mom was 15. My dad was a teenager as well. I was raised in the inner city of Atlanta, Georgia. And long before I got on the road to be pastor in a church, my life was saved by the people and programs at the Boys and Girls Club. So I'm indebted to his mission. I believe it's a worthy mission and I'm committed, not just as a pastor in this community, but as a servant in this community to help this mission continue through our youth and through our team. I have a few people here with me tonight, if you don't mind allowing me to have them stand, please stand. If you're here in support of the Boys and Girls Club, thank you so much for your presence tonight. We have some board members, some community advocates, and we have our government relations contact from Metro Atlanta.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I appreciate it. We have Ms. Charlotte Geller.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm here today to talk about the Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission. It's a joint city-county planning commission with members appointed by both the city council and the Board of Commissioners. Zoning and land use decisions ultimately are handled by either entity, which affects everyone in the county. More trucks or cars on city and county roads affects our travels to shopping, schools, or homes. If the Board of Commissioners wants to be collaborative, requesting the planning commission, excuse me, separating the planning commission is not the way to do it. It just creates more silos. If a purpose is to not have long meetings, which are the exception rather than the rule, a simple solution, not really realistic, but a simple solution is to not have any rezonings in controversial areas or with controversial housing. The planning commission now has seven members, three appointed by the Board of Commissioners and three by the city council. The seventh member alternates between the two entities. I disagree with what City Manager Cameron Kelly says about separating the planning commission. The city planning staff presents city cases to the planning commission and those members can take the lead on those cases. The county staff presents county items. Zoning laws are similar for both entities and I see nothing that limits communications. And when or if the city rezones for more oil change places, fast food, mini storage, or townhomes, it affects everyone in the county, not just city residents. The city, county, and school board have front porch meetings to try to collaborate and bring the silos together. Please don't separate the silos by separating the joint commission. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Terry Walker Moore. Is Terry here? No, okay. Corliss Turner.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioner Williams and Smith. My name is Corliss Turner, as you know, a voice is for Rockdale. We keep citizens informed of what's going on in the county. And in reference to the Boys and Girls Club, I too volunteered time at the Boys and Girls Club down in Gulfport, Mississippi, so I know how important it is. But there is a state law, the state law in Georgia says that it prohibits the distribution of tax money to charities or nonprofits. So I am supporting rescinding that for the Boys and Girls Club. It has nothing to do with them, has to do with the state law. Also, Rockdale County has a, from 2011, they have a resolution in place for not donating taxpayers' dollars as well to nonprofits. So I am asking that it is rescinded. I believe the Boys and Girls Club could probably get donations from individuals or businesses in the area, state grants or federal grants. I'm not against the Boys and Girls Club, I'm just for following the law.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll move into agenda review. And that, so this is considered our working session on Tuesday, February 25th. We'll have our voting session for the items presented today. So we will move to that.
All right, I'll start with the items under unfinished business. And I will keep reading the items until you interrupt me for maybe any questions or something like that. How does that sound? Okay. Item 36 is with Roots of Life LLC, Michael D. Brown. This is to rescind contract 2024-214. The contract was approved on December the 10th, 2024. Through the Extension Services, this would be rescension of that contract and a budget reduction of $40,000 through the Cooperative Extension Service and transferred to the general fund contingency. And item 48 is the matching budget amendment moved from Extension Services to general fund contingency in the amount of $40,000.
So I got a phone call this last week from State Representative Dorian Carter, asking me about that, this contract for Roots of Life for the community garden. Because she helped on that, the congressman's office helped on that. And I think we need to take time to look at all the implications. It's a federal grant. Sometimes when you don't follow through with what you said you were going to do with the federal grant, they won't look at you anymore for, you know, specifically in that particular agency. I think that we really do need to look very closely at it. George mentioned a couple of things about it too today.
I don't think rescinding the contract means that we're not going to do the service. It's just not going to pay that particular entity for that. And from what I understand, the UGA Extension is able to do the services that were listed in order for us to get that grant.
Right. And I did have a conversation with UGA Extension. And they are kind of all up in the air right now, having just lost the director and one of the, I don't know what Mary Beth's title was, but her position. They did just assign a interim director, but it will be August or September, I was told, before they get all that settled and they get the new agents in. And that doesn't leave us time to get anything done for a community garden this year. So, that's one of the reasons that I would like to see it move forward now, so that we can get that going right away instead of waiting.
Do you have any information in reference to this company?
I looked at them, they're out of South Carolina, and they do-
Is that the same one? Is that the same business?
Well, yes.
I didn't find that, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, I was looking yesterday on, I Googled it. There's a, there's something else called Roots of Life. But this particular one with Michael C. Brown is out of South Carolina. And this is what he does and has done. He did not have a webpage, he had a Facebook page. So, Madam Court, can you provide any more information about this contract?
So, we have a couple of things happening. We also have the job posting going out of the position that would take on the community garden. And as far as the USDA grant that we were able to pull down, that won't affect who is in charge of doing this garden. That won't affect that funding. And we can get that message back to Representative Carter if she needs that as well. Were there any other questions about this particular issue?
Well, I did, I did want to make sure that we understand the funding formula. So we received $150,000 for the grant, but what's being asked of us out of the general fund would be $40,000 for this consultant and then about another $40,000 plus benefits at 40% to fund the gardener for the community.
That's right. And since it's going to be housed under the Extension Service, we'd really like the position to be in place before the contractor comes, if we even need a contract to oversee the garden. That was the thought behind that.
I think, when I looked back through the Roots of Life contract, it was really the design and then development.
Right.
And then the person, the assistant, would be the one to keep it going and running. I would suggest that we not rescind it yet, that maybe we take some time and figure out all the angles before we do anything.
Are you asking for it to be taken off the agenda? Or you want a week to decide?
So, not to interrupt, but it's under unfinished business, so now we'll have to vote, whether you vote it up, down, defer, next Tuesday. But in that time, between now and next Tuesday, we could have the answers to the questions before it's presented again about the posting of the job and the USDA grant because, and also based on some of the things that Mr. Kellecheck shared with us today, we could be looking at that as well.
Well, and also let me note for the record that in an effort to be transparent, I feel like this should be open for bid, if that's the way we want to go. But again, we got $150,000, but we're going to spend 40 for this, plus about another 70, 65 for a job and benefits. So we're really putting in a lot more, almost $120,000 possibly for this-
That's right.
-grant. So, you know, this, although I'm a big proponent of the farmer's market that's coming this spring and things like that, it's just a little bit challenging as we're working to trim the budget and things like that. So I would be, if we were going to look that route, I would say that we need to put that out for a bid.
To put the services out.
But according to what Brittany Teet said, the person that's coming on at the Georgia Extension Service has previous experience working for our co-op, correct?
And that was our understanding, that when it went out, that the University of Georgia does these community gardens throughout the state.
Right.
And that was our understanding, that they would come in and if they were to need supplemental help, then they would go from there.
In addition, if we were going to have somebody do that, we would want to look at opportunities for people within Georgia.
Like putting it out there.
Correct. So, all right, a lot of good information for us to consider moving forward.
Yes.
Any other comments? Okay. We'll move to the next item, please.
So item 44 and 45 go together. 44 is a future land use case, 2024-08. An ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County, Georgia's comprehensive plan as amended for property located at 4250 Southeast Highway 20 from the medium density residential future land use category to the commercial future land use category. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. And then there is an adjoining rezoning case that goes along with the same piece of property. And the request is to rezone from AR agricultural residential to C2 general commercial. And this will also be submitted for, bless you, for a second reading next Tuesday.
It says C1. Is that incorrect?
So, the planning commission recommended that it go to C1 instead of C2. So this is before you next Tuesday. That's their recommendation.
What would be the advantages of that versus the other designation?
So, there's not a whole lot of advantages, not going from C1 to C2. The recommendation was no gas stations, no vape shops, no, so anything that you would have in the C2, you wouldn't have it with the conditions that are proposed.
So to meet the goals of the ordinance revisions that we're looking to add moving forward- So, to meet the goals of the ordinance revisions that we're looking to add moving forward, which one most closely aligns with what our goals are?
For this request, C1 with conditions.
Okay, all right. Very helpful, thank you.
All right, and then that brings us to the regular agenda. And item 50 is with the Boys and Girls Club of Rockdale County to rescind contract 2024-207. This was approved on December 10th, 2024 by the Board of Commissioners for $125,000 per year for professional services for mentoring youth in the community. And then item 50A is submitted, it's the same contract, but as an amendment, for the Boys and Girls Club, for the Board of Commissioners for professional services for mentoring youth in the community. And it's a reduction of the current contract that's approved at $125,000 annually to $100,000 annually. The term would be January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025, with option to renew. And that is a budgeted item? Do we wanna talk about those?
We do.
Okay.
So, for that contract, I did meet with, I've met a couple of times with the leadership, volunteer leadership at the Boys and Girls Club and toured the facility again.
Okay.
And talked to Mr. Garcia and other people that came to meet with me. And, I mean, I've been a long-term fan of the Boys and Girls Club, I know the good work that they do. I think the challenge for me is that we have an ordinance in place that says that we don't fund nonprofits, and that was created years ago. Because we did have a lot of requests for nonprofit funding. And I think, for me, the challenge is how do we find that balance? Because while it's a very worthwhile organization, it's hard for us to pick one, when there's some other nonprofits that are certainly notable. And so, I know that we have made a payment to comply with the contract right now. I remember thinking it was around $37,000.
I think it's 31,000. 31,250, right?
All right, so we have made that payment. And I think in our contract, it talks about deliverables and maybe some measurables. So, maybe we could get clarification on that as we move forward. And I think, based on what Pester Hall said, it looked like they were amenable to conversations. So, I will say that I'm very conflicted on that and the path that it can open for future challenges by other nonprofits.
So, what you have before you is the call for the rescension of the contract that was approved in December. And then a separate item, which is an approval of, I guess it would be a new contract, but it's technically an amendment, to go to $100,000. And then there's a little bit of a change in the scope. So, do you wanna talk about those?
Okay, so let me just make sure I understand. So, the rescension seems like that may be something that could be agreed upon.
So, I think if the board is looking at moving towards contracting with the Boys and Girls Club, it seems to me as if you're looking at a contract amendment before you, instead of rescinding. But if you aren't, then you are looking at rescinding and then denial of a new contract. Because you have two items on your agenda right now.
But why wouldn't 50 be a rescension of the contract? And then you go to the next A sub-
Well, I guess because you've already made one payment under a contract. And if you are looking at just getting rid of the contract, then you would rescind it. And you could just go into a new one, or you could amend the current contract.
Can you just have a contract that's modified for the amount that was paid?
For the amount and if the scope has changed.
But we haven't received any deliverables.
Right.
So, our payment was for January to-
It was 31,250, right, first quarter.
Okay, and are we paying them anymore at this point? So, just first quarter?
Waiting on today or next week?
Okay, all right.
So, that's what the discussion would be today.
So, we gave that payment per the contract, but deliverables have not been made yet. Because that's in the programming that's to come.
Right, and so the payment that was made on that contract, the deliverables are, would you like me to read them?
I don't think they've been delivered, right.
Okay.
Yeah, they have, they have. They're in Exhibit A.
Mr. Garcia, could you address that for me? Have deliverables been made yet? I didn't think they had been started yet.
I'm not sure, but I do-
Oh, okay, you mean implemented yet?
Implemented, yes.
I, I do know that our CEO, David Jernigan, had a few conversations off, with Commissioner, Commissioner Williams, I believe. And I'm not sure exactly the details of the discussion, but they may have discussed the deliverables. I'm not entirely sure.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much. Okay, so, maybe if you wanna read what the change in scope is?
The original contract is providing mentoring services for the youth, job readiness, living healthy in the community, financial literacy, provide education of the arts in different Rockdale County capacities, and civic education to the youth on the local, state, federal, and international awareness activities for the youth. That was the original contract, so I'm not sure if they've given that or not. And then, in the revised, the number went down. And then, it looks like the deliverables are similar, but they've got timeframes around them. Like, for example, provide summer program up to six weeks for youth, provide after-school programming on weekdays, and implement program to support academic success, character leadership development, healthy lifestyles for ages, students that are six to 18. And then, in collaboration with other community partners, provide mentoring services, job readiness. And to the extent that a consultant should use any dollars from the county to directly compensate a community partner for any of these services, the consultant shall seek the county's approval before proceeding with executing a contract with the community partner. Those were the changes.
So, there was also a change in, it was a two-year contract. And I said I would want it to be a one-year contract and not automatically renewable. Renewable only if they could demonstrate that they have received other funding during this year. I feel like since the contract was approved in December, and they were counting on it, to pull it now is not really in the benefit of our, of the youth of Rockdale County. It is a contract, it is not just giving them money. But they are expected to do certain things with that, which is okay. Because I've had this conversation with the county attorney. We could do that if we have specific items that we want them to do, that the county really can't get involved in providing these kinds of services.
But our Parks and Recreation Department does run programs to address students in the community. And the parents pay a fee, which I understand these parents don't pay a fee, or they pay less than $100, which I know there are people that definitely need it. So, I am all about supporting youth in our community. I, I think if this was the way that we wanna go as a community, then we need to change the ordinance that says we're not gonna fund nonprofits.
And that's something we've talked about.
But I feel like we'd need to talk about that before we approve a contract that does fund nonprofits. Because if we were gonna fund a program for children whose parents couldn't afford to attend a program, then I would think we would send that out for a bid process, so people could apply, like a grant application. And I still think Boys and Girls Club would probably come to the top. I mean, they do a lot of great work, it's just hard to isolate one that serves 200 students, when maybe there's others that serve other targeted goals. So, I think that's my challenge, is trying to understand that.
It sounds like our goals are the same. That we wanna be able to provide these services to our youth. So, it sounds like what we're just talking about is a different way to do that. So, maybe we need further discussion on that this week.
I have a question. I know it's been mentioned that it's not legal for us to do that. Is it possible to do this based on the fact that they are going to provide a service and it's not just a check being written to the Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah, so let's talk about that for a minute. So, what the Board of Commissioners did amongst themselves in 2011 is pass a resolution that says, listen, we're not, with the exception of the credsee, we're not gonna fund nonprofits, right? Entering into a contract with someone that happens to be a nonprofit, but that is doing services that are an extension of the county is different than just giving money or a donation, I suppose. That's, that's what you're doing, you're getting something back. Like, I know we used to do the Arts Smart Camp. We would contract with the, you know, Contraire Rockdale Council for the Arts or the library system or something like that. But in their contract, they were performing a service. Now, it's also relevant to talk about how we get there. If there are other places that provide those services, we should be putting it out. But I, I agree with that. But sometimes they're sole source, sometimes they're the only ones that provide that. But it's not illegal to contract for services, so.
Now, in reference to what you're saying, putting it out there, I think that we should, if we're going to do this, it should be with the Boys and Girls Club this year. And if we're going to put it out, we can do that for next year, once, at the end of their term, because we do have a contract with them. And we have already given them the money, once already. So, I don't think that would be fair to them for us to do that now and say, oh, for the rest of the money, let's put it out and let's other people fight for it. No, we, it was told to them, not by us, not by us, but that they were going to get it. So, this is something that we have to deal with. But I think that in order to be fair, that we, if we're going to do this, that we don't make it a bid process in the middle of what they have going on right now.
I see. And so, maybe I'd say, my intent going forward is not to fund individual nonprofits. It is the spirit of the law, the ordinance that was written in 2011 was clearly to make it fair across the board. So, the only other organization funded by the county is the Rockdale Coalition. And that's because it's a state mandate, correct?
That is correct, and we created it through resolution, so, that is, that is right.
So, so my challenge would be this, if we're gonna fund it, which, I'm sticking with the 2011 ordinance, so that leaves it to the two of you, what we fund it at, okay? The taxpayers sent me for a reason, so that's where I'm gonna stand, but-
They sent us all for a reason.
What?
They sent us all for a reason.
Yes, yes, very true, very true. But I would like to see, you know, maybe quarterly reports from them. And also, I would like-
And that is included in the contract.
And I would like to see how they can match the dollars with their own fundraising mechanisms. Because when they recently had an event, I didn't know anything about the fundraiser. And many of the people I asked in the community, I was like, did you know about this? Did you, nobody knew about it. So, I know, because I've served on many boards, that one of the challenges is your mailing list, getting people to events, it's hard. I do understand that. But maybe where we can step in as, as the county is to really help strengthen our nonprofits through the Coalition, who has monthly meetings to help the nonprofits, whether it's through guest lectures or different people to come and work with in a mentorship-type capacity. Or some of the great volunteers in the community that can help energize the nonprofits. Because we do want our Boys and Girls Club, they're an important part of our community. They have a long history here. And in order to do that, it's not just the Boys and the Girls Club having fundraising issues. It's almost every nonprofit in town. And so, I would like to see all those strengthened. We have a great faith-based community that could also be a part of this solution. So, I'd just look for a long-term strategy from the board to try and energize those entities, so, thank you.
Right, so, item 51 goes along with that as well. So, you do have until next Tuesday to figure out how you might wanna vote on all three of these items, because they, they go together.
Okay, thank you.
And then, item 52 is with Paula Boyd through the Superior Court Adult Resource Court for peer specialists providing peer support services for the Accountability Courts Program. This is change order number one to contract 2022-141 to add temporary additional duties for assisting with case management job duties until a replacement can be found. It's $25 per hour for these temporary additional duties. The grant goes through June 30th, 2025. This is grant-funded and a budgeted item.
Is, Adult Resource Court is with?
Judge Bills.
Okay, that's what, I couldn't remember which one. Thank you.
And item 53 is with DCR Media Systems Incorporated through the General Services Department for on-demand supply and installation of the audio and visual, audio and video equipment. It's for one year with option to renew three additional one-year periods. This is multi-funds and it's a budgeted item. Item 54-
Can you tell me, so there's multi-funds, but what's the total?
Director Hammer, can you answer that?
Commissioners, so this is like an on-call contract, so it's unit prices. So, when we bid this out, we asked for four different packages of audiovisual equipment, one for the courthouse, one for a large conference room, one for a small conference room. And then, I forget what the third one, or the fourth one was for. And this would be, each time we need those services for either the courthouse or the meeting rooms or the conference rooms, we would contract with them for that package at that set price. So, it's sort of an on-call or as needed, on-demand.
And how do you, how does the bid syst-, you're bidding it out?
Correct, it was bid out. And I believe there was either two or three bidders that came back. And this, in this case, ITB, it's a, I'm blanking on-
Lowest.
It's lowest, Invitation of Bid, thank you. It's been a long day. Invitation of Bid, so this is not, it's evaluated, it's simply a low bidder. And they, they were the most qualified, responsive, responsible bidder.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, item 54 is with the Department of Natural Resources through the General Services Department. Change order number one to contract 2022-145. This is a four-month extension through April 30th, 2025 of the Water Conservation Fund Grant for the DeCastro Trailhead Nature Center and Pavilion. Item 55 is with All Pro Pest Services through the General Services Department for pest control for county facilities. This is on-demand and it's change order number one to contract 2023-188 to add four additional sites at an additional cost of $100 per month, making it a total of $2,089 per month and $25,068 per year. Previously, it was $1,989 per month and $23,868 per year. This is for one year with option to renew two additional one-year periods. This is through the General Fund and it's a budgeted item. It's a lot of information for pest services, okay.
Can I, can we go back a minute to 54? What is this grant for? Nature Center and Pavilion, is that for building those, or?
So, we thought you might ask.
I might stand up here for a minute, I have a few. So, we did a couple of slides, in case you asked about this one. We had a grant back in 2022 for the, what they called the DeCastro Nature Center. The Castro, it, it should be named the Marley and Ramon DeCastro Memorial Park. In 1991, Mr. Ramon DeCastro, I believe his, his wife had just passed away, and he donated the property to the county. And the Board of Commissioners, under Randy Pointer at the time, did a proclamation to have the center serve as a nature preserve to promote recreation and education in a natural habitat. So, that was the intent of that from the very beginning for the 80 acres. At the time, there was a home that was on the site that Mr. DeCastro lived in. And then, when he passed away, he was buried in a very small cemetery that is also on the site. So, the county, at the time, used it for a ranger station. There was a maintenance person, I believe, that lived in there, and they took care of the area. But over the years, the, the property, you know, didn't get any younger as, as we go on in time. And, and the three main goals that we had for the property all along were in, in line with the, the Nature Center and the Memorial Park were to repurpose the building for an open-air, open-air pavilion, so we could have events, people could use that, they could rent the pavilion.
Director Hammer, one second, sorry.
Yes.
Public Relations, if you can put the slide up while he's talking?
Public Relations, if you can put the slide up while he's talking, thank you.
I'll go through the pictures, yeah.
Sorry.
We had a couple of pictures on there, too. And then have restrooms along the trail, uh, along the Rockdale River Trail and, uh, to highlight the natural resources of the property. So when the pictures come up, I'll show you the-
So is this right on the South River, or is?
It is, it is, but it's far back from the road to get there.
I remember.
Like Daniels Bridge.
That's correct, Daniels Bridge Road. You'd have to go all the way back, past all the properties, and there's a gate there that begins the, the property. If you go to the next slide, uh, we'll skip this one, too. That was the floor plan for the existing. So this is the existing house that was there. Um, as you can see, it was, uh, rather dilapidated. The framing was sinking, the floor was sinking in, it had roof leaks. Um, it's not handicap compliant. It wasn't meant for the public. It was where Mr. DeCastro lived, uh, for many years. So it wasn't really in usable state. Uh, so what we did, if you go to the next slide, after the renovations, skip this one, too, please. What we did is they, they salvaged everything we could on there, kept the foundation stones and the chimney. And we stripped off some of the beams and some of the cedar shake siding and things like that, and created a brand-new, uh, pavilion. Um, it has the new framing, uh, uh, new solid, uh, beams that we used, uh, hardy plank siding, uh, metal roofing. And as you can see, it's a little hard to see on the picture, but, uh, like a stained tongue-grew ceiling, so it's more durable, so it'll last longer. Uh, LED lighting and even a stamped decorative concrete, uh, that we did on there. So we were going for all durable materials, because they're outdoors, but it could be used for restrooms, also for, um, uh, nature center events. Um, and, uh, if, uh, Director Redman was here, he could talk about all the things that he plans to do up there with the, the scouts and some other areas, um, uh, to use for that. Uh, as in addition to being right off the trail, uh, be used a lot for restrooms. So there's a little pocket park, a little bench seating. Um, so if you're coming along the trail from South Rockdale Park and you're traveling all the way to Panola Mountain, there's a restroom about halfway on that section.
And what's the total investment we've put in that?
Uh, the, the total project cost was $250,000. $125,000 came from the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant and $125,000 came from SPOS funding.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, item 56 is with Galls LLC through the Fire Rescue Department for fire uniforms. This is on-demand and for one year with option to renew three additional one-year periods. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item. Item 57 is with Hussey, Gay, Bell, and DeYoung through the Consulting Engineers for the Transportation Department. This is the concept report for Sigma Road Phase Four Widening and Multi-Use Path. This is change order number one to contract 2023-160 to add a pre-qualified right-of-way acquisition specialist required by GDOT. It's an additional $5,115.45. Currently, it's at $885,110.31, making the new total $890,225.76. This is for 18 months. This is SPOS and federally funded and is a budgeted item.
Can we, can we talk about Mr. Director Kelly? Just to clarify what that's going to look like when implemented?
Good evening, Commissioner, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Smith, and Chair Viness, good evening. Um, so this project is essentially, if you're looking at Phase Four from 138 to I-20 on the east side, side of town of Conyers, um, we're looking at getting the right-of-way information that we need for all of that territory. If we're going to widen all of that, there's businesses, there's, uh, properties that we need to look at, how much right-of-way for lanes, utilities, um, sidewalks. This, if this specifically speaks to that, and that allows us to take that next step in, in the phase of going towards construction.
Does that include acquisition?
Does not.
So that's like the last?
Piece of the loop of the, we always talk about the, the part, north part of the bypass that we're looking at doing. That will be that quadrant on the northeast side.
East side, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And, and what's the width of the path that's being created?
Those are 10-foot.
10-foot, okay, thank you very much.
I have a question. Why did they increase the pro, the cost? Why, what was the purpose of the increase?
So that was for the right-of-way expertise. That wasn't originally not included, we need to look at that with the scope. So now that we see that this, this project is viable, we need to understand what the right-of-way piece of the puzzle looks at or is looking like before we get into acquisition. This helps us understand what that, what that piece of the puzzle looks like.
Thank you.
And it says that it's a, the specialist is required by GDOT?
Correct.
So you don't really, we don't really have a choice in that?
If you want to negotiate, you have to have that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, item 58 is with Atlas Technical Consultants LLC through the Transportation Department for Courtesy Parkway Extension Project Design. This is change order number five to contract 2017-36. This is to add post-design services. It's an additional $91,115.96. So currently, the contract is $448,222, making the new total $539,337.97. This is 96 cents. This is SPOS-funded and a budgeted item.
Um, Madam Clerk, can you explain five change orders? And we haven't even broken ground over there.
Hmm, okay, let me see. Wait a minute, she asked me.
All right, good evening again. So those change orders were a combination of things. The most recent was, uh, right-of-way acquisition. That was giving them the, the ability to jump from those pre-designed phases to go into the right-of-way acquisition and make sure that we had the ability to do cost-for-cures. So that's what those last ones were. You had a design, uh, change in there as well, and there were some environmental changes that made up those five.
And so, so is that one, two, three, four, and five? This is the change, or there's been five and?
This is the, this is the fifth one.
That's right.
I can dive back in and give you each one, if, if, if you like. Um, let me know, and I can definitely-
Well, transportation projects aren't lowest-bidder anyway, so isn't it based on other qualifiers?
That is correct.
Okay. Is it normal to have five?
Typically, you have more.
Oh, I'm sure we'll have more before it gets done. I just wondered at this point.
Construction is, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, very good, thank you.
I hope my explanation was good.
It works, it works.
Okay. Item 59 is with CPL Architects, Engineers and Landscape Architects, DPC, through the Planning and Development Department. This is Rockdale County's Planning and Development Unified Development Ordinance Update. This is $178,440. The term is 18 months, general fund and budgeted item. I think I saw the confetti coming down. Where, where's the confetti?
If it's not, it should, yes. This is, we've been waiting on this for a long time, so this is good.
Yeah, they have, um, a lot to live up to. All right, item 60 is with State Farm Insurance through the Finance Department. This is for the subgr, subrogation authorization release property damage only through State Farm's client at fault in accident involving Rockdale County Sheriff's Office Unit Number 237 causing damages of $21,517.45. This payment is a reimbursement to the County General Fund and will settle all demands related to the accident. Item 61 is with State Farm Insurance through the Finance Department. Sub, subrogation authorization release property damage only through State Farm's client at fault in accident involving Rockdale County Sheriff's Unit 563 causing damages of $32,796.61. This payment is a reimbursement to the County General Fund and will settle all demands related to the accident. Item 62 is with LexisNexis Risk Solutions through the Sheriff's Office. This is for AccuNet Track System Software for the cell phone mapping and crucial day-to-day operations of the investigative team. The amount is $7,875 per year. The term is November 30th, 2025, is through November 30th, 2025. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item. Item 63 is a requisition through the General Services Department for southeastern security professionals. It's a renewal to contract 2024-31. This is for the 2025 Alarm Monitoring Services. The amount is $36,000, and this is through the general fund and the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
Can you clarify what that scope is for, please? I don't think it's just for a building, is it?
No, it's for multiple county buildings.
Okay, very good, that's it.
He was on his way.
Yes, thank you.
Be quicker, okay. Item 64 is a requisition through the General Services Department for United Maintenance. It's a renewal to contract 2024-19 for the 2025 HVAC Preventative Maintenance Services. The amount is $147,207 through the general fund and the Water Enterprise Fund, and this is a budgeted item. Item 65 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Imperial Dade. This is a purchase from Cooperative Contract. It's 2025 janitorial supplies and not to exceed $33,996. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I have a question. What supplies do they, um, provide? Okay, you can come up.
Listen.
This whole count is a mini-workout for you.
I get my steps in. Um, this is for all janitorial supplies. So toilet paper, paper towels, cleaning supplies, mop heads, anything that you can think of, uh, for the, the custodial staff.
Thank you.
Item 66, 66 is a requisition through General Services Department for ArborServe. This is a renewal to contract 2022-152 for the 2025 Quarterly Tree Grinding and Debris Hauling at the Recycling Center. It's in an amount not to exceed $120,000. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item. Item 67 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Pratt Recycling for renewal of the contract 2021-68. This is for the 2025 Bulk Waste and Trash Compactor Recycling in an amount not to exceed $300,000. This is through general fund and is a budgeted item. Item 68 is a requisition through General Services Department for the American Facility Services. This is a renewal to contract 2023-172 for the 2025 Janitorial Services. The amount is $258,528. This is through the general fund and Stormwater Enterprise Fund. This is a budgeted item. Item 69 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Building Maintenance Services. This is renewal to contract 2023-173 for the 2025 Janitorial Services. The amount is $136,714.56. The new cost is $142,409.56. The cost increased from 2024 by $5,695 per year. This is through the general fund, Water Enterprise Fund, and Stormwater Enterprise Fund. This is a budgeted item. Item 70 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Yancey Power Systems. This is through state contract. It's 2025 Generator Preventative Maintenance Services. The amount is $72,808.6. This is for 21 generators through the general fund and is a budgeted item. Item 71 is a requisition through Technology Services Department for TSA. This is a budgeted, budgeted implemented services for the rubric software and countywide backup. This is NCPA Cooperative Contract. The amount is $115,655.22. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item. Item 72 is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for United Maintenance. This is a replacement of the jail, jail RTUs for the pod and replacement of staff RTU heat exchanger. The amount is $67,313. This is through Capital Improvement Fund and is a budgeted item and is submitted for ratification. Item 73 is a requisition through Rockdale Water Resource Customer Service Department. This is for online utility exchange. This is contract 2013-46 for the use of online utility exchange for positive IDs in an amount not to exceed $22,000. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and it's a budgeted item. Item 74 is an expenditure request through Aramark Services for the Sheriff's Office. This is contract 2022-177. It's a cost for inmate meals for the week of January 2nd, 2025 through January 8th, 2025, and January 16th, 2025 through January 22nd, 2025 in the amount of $27,207.91. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
So what happened to the other weeks? What, what happened between January 16th and, and January 22nd?
Good evening. Um, Finance will check on that. We are actually, um, at the end of the contract and have this out for bid now, so we're doing it on a billable basis.
Okay.
Is it more expensive this way, I would assume?
Yeah, right now, they're honoring the prices.
Oh, okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, item 75 is an expenditure request through Axon Enterprise through the Sheriff's Office. This is contract 2023-20 for Axon Annual Maintenance Agreement in the amount of $455,744. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
And that's for repairs and maintenance, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Of the jail.
That's for the cameras.
Oh, that's just for the cameras?
Body cams and the whole camera systems.
That's right.
Yes, that's right.
Yes. Item 76, and it is an expenditure request through GTS through the Tax Commissioner's Office. This is for delinquent notice fees for technical services agreement payment covering March 2024 and July 2024 in the amount of $24,314.21. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item. Item 77 is Text Amendment Case 2025-01, an ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1 Definitions and Section 218-13 Standards of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended, adding gasoline stations to the Definitions Section and amending the supplemental regulations related thereto to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 78 is Text Amendment Case 2025-02, an ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1 Definitions, Sections 218-1 Table of Permitted Uses and Section 218-13 Standards of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended, adding small-box discount retailers to the Division, Definitions Section, adding small-box discount real, retailers to the table of permitted uses and adding supplemental regulations related thereto to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 79 is Text Amendment Case 2025-03, an ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1 Definitions, Sections 218-1 Table of Permitted Uses and Section 218-13 Standards of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended, adding vape stores to the Definitions Section, adding vape stores to the table of permitted uses and adding supplemental regulations related thereto to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday.
Can you clarify, are vape stores currently in our code?
No, they're not defined like that.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 2025-80, Text Amendment Case 2025-04, an ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1 Definitions, Section 218-1 Permitted, Table of Permitted Uses, Sections 218-13 Standard of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended regarding many storage warehouses and self-storage units and amending the supplemental regulations related thereto to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday.
First read.
Oh, thank you. First reading next Tuesday. Item 2025-81 is a Text Amendment Case 2025-05. An ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1 Definitions, Sections 218-1 Table of Permitted Uses, Section 206-1 WP Watershed Protection District, and Section 218-13 Standards of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended regarding short-term rentals and amending the supplemental regulations related thereto to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday.
First reading.
I'm trying to get this done as fast as I can, right? Second reading. We're going to fast forward to adopt them, second, first reading. Thank you. Item 2025-82, Text Amendment Case 2025-06. An ordinance to amend the Code of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended so as to amend Section 106-1C Definition, Section 106 Definitions and Abbreviations, Section 218-1 Table of Permitted Uses, and Section 218-13 Supplemental Regulations, Subpart B Planning and Development to provide for repealing of conflicting provisions, to provide for an adoption date and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 2025-83, Text Amendment Case 2025-07. An ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1 Definitions, Sections 2-135 and 238-3 Planning Commission, Standards of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended regarding the Planning Commission and amending the supplemental regulations related thereto to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 2025-84, Future Land Use Amendment Case 2025-01. An ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County, Georgia's Comprehensive Plan as amended for property located at 2200 Frontier Drive Northwest from the medium-density residential future land use category to the commercial future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 2025-85 is Rezoning Case 2025-02. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 2200 Frontier Drive Northwest from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Local Commercial to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 2025-86, Future Land Use Case 2025-02. An ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County, Georgia's Comprehensive Plan as amended for property located at 2567 Northeast Gee's Mill Road from the Technology Park future land use category to the medium-density residential future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 2025-87 is Rezoning Case 2025-01. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 2567 Northeast Gee's Mill Road from AR Agricultural Residential to CRS Collaborative Residential Subdivision to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 2025-88, Rezoning Case 2025-03. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 1535 and 1565 Northwest Farmer Road from R1 Single Family Residential to M1 Limited Industrial to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a first reading next Tuesday. Item 2025-89 is a list of alcoholic beverage licenses requests. Item 2025-90 are amendments to the Rockdale County Classification and Pay Plan submitted by the Talent Management Department.
So.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Commissioners. Item 2025-90 are the proposed amendments to the Rockdale County Classification and Pay Plan. The proposed amendments include the transfer of a project manager from the BLC to the Chief Superior Court, the removal of the Chief Strategy Officer from the BLC. It also includes the removal of two Recreation Event Coordinator positions removed from Parks and Recreation, specifically Costly Mill, and also the removal of an Arts and Culture Operations Manager from Parks and Recreation. So the total removal of four positions, one from the BLC, the other three from Parks and Recreation, and transfer from the BLC to the Chief Superior Court. So that is the, those are the proposed amendments to the Pay and Class Plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And while you're at it, the next item, 2025-91 are the corresponding budget amendments.
Yes, and I'll call up CFO Irisary for that.
Good evening. These are the corresponding budget amendments. The first one you have is 192-275, and that's moving those positions out of the Board of Commissioners and that amount into the General Fund contingency. The second item B is moving the $306,000 for Professional Services from the Board of Commissioners to Superior Court, which correlates with the move of the position. And the third one, $184,206, is the removal of the two positions from Parks and Rec and moving that amount to General Fund contingency.
Can you talk about the $306,000 move to Superior Court?
Sure. So that is part of the stepping up initiative. It was budgeted in the Board of Commissioners for $306,000 in Professional Services, and that amount is being moved, the same $306,000, to Superior Court, which is where the position will now reside. And the corresponding funding.
Then item 2025-92 is with the Georgia Strategy Group through the Board of Commissioners Office. This is for Professional Services for Marketing and Community Relations. The amount is $100,000 per year. The term is January 31st, 2026, through January 31st, 2026, then auto renews at the end of each renewal term.
I'd like for us to talk about this item specifically. I know for myself, I think that right now we have some of these services already ongoing. So I'm trying to understand the duplication of services and how that would be addressed. And Commissioner Williams, I think you added this to the agenda.
Let me pull that up. This is, I added this contract because I believe it, they will give us a bigger picture, bigger scope, bigger messaging than what we really have the capability of doing with our public relations and some of our other departments. Part of it is also to create a marketing packet and a brochure for Rockdale County, especially for economic development. Another one is to help with strategic messaging to the community. You know, why are we doing certain things? And how does that benefit or not benefit the community? Have been strengthening partnerships and building coalitions with governmental entities, community organizations, private sector leaders. Assist in the development of public-private partnerships for projects benefiting Rockdale County. We know that we are maxed out in terms of the amount that we can, we can't get any more bonds. We're at that limit. And so, public-private partnerships are a way to see about getting assistance in getting some of the things that we would like done without having to, you know, with using the investments we've already made. And then in connection with that then is the development marketing promotion of the county-owned Sigmund Road property, working in collaboration with the Board of Commissioners and the Development Authority of Rockdale County, since they are the ones that have talked about taking that on.
Did you have any questions?
No, just your concern. I just wanted to know what services did you feel were duplicated?
Okay. So, a couple of things, because I thought I saw this, a similar version not long ago that included maybe some lobbying work.
Yeah.
Correct? But that is not in here anymore? Okay, so that's been taken out. So first of all, because of the dollar amount, it's right at the threshold, and I feel like if we were going to do this, we should look at, open the process. We talk about being transparent, and I think this is an opportunity to prove that. With the lobbying being taken out, that's good, because we already have a lobbyist at both the state level, which we pay roughly $96,000 a year, and then at the federal level, which we pay roughly.
About the same.
About the same.
Yeah, about 96.
Okay. So then if we look at item 1, High Level Advice to the Board of Commissioners on Major Local, State, and National Issues, Policies, and Decisions as Needed in the Interest of Rockdale County. That part of it is addressed by our lobbyist at both the state and the federal level. In addition, we have a Legislative Director, which is Madam Clerk, and that role is filled at this time. And we have, as far as offering expert high-level advice, we have Peachtree Consultants for the state lobbyist and Patty Daly at the federal level. So I'm not sure what we would get different that's not presented at ACCG meetings and trainings and at the NACO convention. And then the next part of that is including strategic messaging to the community, which may include digital platforms, print media, town hall meetings, and event campaigns. Now, on the cuff, I'm going to ask our PR Director, Melissa Mims, to address that. And see if maybe you can communicate. And maybe, I'm not sure if you're aware of those needs of the board or exactly what your opinion might be of that.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Madam Commissioners. Just so that you guys are aware, we have an award-winning Public Relations Department. So when we're asked or given a task, we don't just do it, we over, you know, we don't under-deliver and over-promise, we over-deliver and under-promise. So hearing those things that are being requested, marketing, strategy, digital, that's something that your Public Relations Department can handle. Just let us know what you're looking for, whatever the desires of the board is, that's our desire to make it happen for you.
And so maybe, maybe the conversation should be like what we are looking for.
Correct.
And maybe that is what you could be charged with trying to find out. Or maybe you can research and make recommendations to us.
Absolutely. Whatever your desires are, we would love to know what they are so that we can move in that direction.
We want to make sure everybody knows Rockdale is the best place to be.
We can handle that.
So, yes. So, and then we, item number two, assist in drafting a comprehensive strategic marketing plan to include creating a marketing packet and brochure to promote Rockdale County and its initiatives. Now, I know in the past I've had numerous conversations through the years with our economic development arm of the community and the Development Authority about funding, assisting in funding some really impressive pieces, not only print but also digital. So that may be something that you can consider if that's something that we can handle in-house, if we need an outside consultant. I would love your recommendation. And honestly, I think your leadership in that regard would be helpful to clarify for all three of us. Let's see if any more of these align with you. Analyze complex situations and propose solutions that align with the Board of Commissioners' goals and vision, including strategic messaging to the community, which may include digital platforms, print media, town hall meetings, and event campaigns. Are you, do you currently work with digital programming?
Absolutely. So everything that's done on social media is digital. Radio is digital. Commercials are digital. As stated, and it's not just a statement, we have the numbers to prove it. We have an award-winning Public Relations Department. Our videos, our social media, we win awards for that. We have a multi-talented team and we're ready to serve.
Okay. So me, okay, and we also do print media, but I will say, I think we could improve in that area, but I think you're just looking for the direction of the board. Would that be fair to be?
Absolutely.
Okay. Town hall meetings, we do have one planned, but we can do more, and we want to do outreach to the community. I think collaboratively, we've spoken about even adding some of the school, school board members or going out to the schools to talk about things that we want to find out from them, whatever the topics are. Maybe it's transportation questions, maybe it's citizen engagement, those kind of things. So do you think that's something that could be facilitated by your department?
So Public Relations take their directors from the Board of Commissioners. So if that is something that you would like to happen, you just have to let us know and we'll plan it.
Okay. And then event campaigns, so I think whatever that may be.
Well, we're already working in that. Some of our events include partnership with the City of Conyers, Red, White &amp; Boom, Rockin' Women of Rockdale, the Christmas tree lighting, so we're definitely experiencing event campaigns.
Okay. All right. Assist with Stakeholder Engagement and Coalition Building by Strengthening Partnerships and Building Coalitions for Rockdale County with government entities, community organizations, and private sector leaders. This will include strategic advice on how to engage effectively with these groups.
So 100%. I'm the first director that created the Community Stakeholder Group with the Pastor's Table List that so many people, open records request. So that was under this leadership that that happened, our Community Stakeholder Group with different leaders. That's something that we've grown under this leadership. When I started in 2022, 2021, we only had the HOA list, and now we have multiple Community Stakeholder lists.
Okay. Is there a specific vision that you have for engaging community stakeholders or anything on item four that comes to mind?
Well, I think it's the relationship sometimes with outside businesses, outside organizations, outside of Rockdale County, that another group has more connections and relationships established and can introduce them to us and work towards partnerships in that way.
And what would that look like? Can you give me a couple of examples of the outside people that you're talking about? Like relationship building?
Let me think about it for a minute.
Okay, all right. Any for you? Okay. So I will say, I think that's an area that I know needs to be developed and have been working on, but also I think our Public Relations Department and our communications have talked about how we can have a bigger presence in the community and share the good news of what businesses are doing and growing that segment. And I know that we have several AV specialists that can help with promotion and things of that nature. I think stakeholder engagement for me means a lot of the stakeholders currently in our community and getting them more engaged. I know that facilitation for town hall meetings and things like that, sometimes in the past, has been outside consultants coming in, running those meetings. I think there is the opportunity for us to run some of our own meetings, either with our peer department or some of the great people that live right here in the community on a volunteer basis. I've had several people volunteer to help in any way possible. So that would be one. As far as number five, assist in the development of public-private partnerships for projects benefiting Rockdale County. I do see that as a component that CREDSEE, the Conyers Rockdale Economic Development Council, has been talking about, and we are working on solutions to try and find a way to bring those big partners together to develop the Sigmund Road property as well as, you know, possible other things, but right now the focus has been on Sigmund Road. So you do have your development. So you do have your Development Authority and your Conyers-Rockdale Economic Development Council working on that specific thing as we speak. And that's been talked about for the last several weeks. And then six would be aid with the development, marketing, and promotion of the county-owned Sigmund Road property, which is what I mentioned, in collaboration with the BOC and the Development Authority. So I know that Kevin Hanna does come and do presentations from time to time. In fact, he's on my agenda for tomorrow, but I think he also meets with each of you as well?
He does not.
Okay. So maybe we need to change that to make sure that there's unity and information being delivered?
I think that's, that's a great point, even what you're saying, that these things are being done. I mean, if, I guess if she knew, or if I knew, it wouldn't be a need to
Okay.
think that we need a consultant. You know what I'm saying, I'm saying?
Well, that, that is a good point. And so because these, the, the meeting just happened last, was it last week? That we just had the retreat on Thursday possibly with CREDC. That did just happen on Thursday, but I will get a report to both of you to share that. Kevin is really going to be able to be the best to deliver that information, but I can add some notes to it of what would apply most to us for the BOC.
Right. So I, I think one of the advantages, however, of having someone focused on these specific things is, is the fact that we're, our departments and our CREDC are already working at capacity. We didn't fund CREDC. We didn't give them that extra money to have a person come in and assist. And so I think we can't expect them to add on additional responsibilities at our direction if we haven't given them the resources to do that.
Right.
And I think, I think this is a good way to do that. And I don't think it takes away from public relations at all because I think we're looking at a broader scope than just what's going on right here in Rockdale County. One of the things I was thinking about was, there's so many ideas with developers and developments and the different types of things, to have someone make those connections for us that we could partner with them with, and taught, and how we could use and implement some of the newer ideas that are happening around the United States. I, I think...
And the qualifications of the company that you're proposing or what for that? What relationships do they have on a national basis?
I don't know about national. I do know statewide.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. So I'd also like to, I had a meeting scheduled weeks ago with Dentons. And Dentons is notably nationally a very, very well-known law firm as well as lobbying. They do a host of things. So my meeting was this morning at eight AM, so the timing of the presentation for this other contract actually worked out well because I said, "I just found out about this. Tell me about all the opportunities we would have as a community working with Dentons." So since you have a copy of that, I'm sorry, this just came off the press, but we'll get you both a copy.
Oh, I was, okay.
But they are, again, a nationwide company. They have a stellar reputation. They can facilitate introductions and relationship building with key stakeholders, including the Georgia Department of Economic Development, Georgia Economic Developers Association, Georgia Association of Manufacturers, Georgia Chamber, Metro Atlanta Chamber, A R C, and others. They can organize strategic meetings with decision-makers to communicate Rockdale's priorities and create synergies, develop talking points and briefing materials for county leadership to engage effectively with stakeholders. They, their company currently has state legislative advocacy, which I will say, right now, we're paying about ninety-six thousand dollars for our delegation. And we're only asking this year for redevelopment powers. That's kind of sad that that's the only thing we need this year, but...
Okay, did you say it's Denton?
Dentons, D-E-N-T-O-N-S. Besides that, they can provide policy development, executive branch outreach, procurement matters. They have a presence in Washington DC. They, in theory, could be your state and federal lobbyists in one. As you know, the session ends in April, so our lobbying interest would not really be relevant until gearing up in the later fall. They also have multi-state engagement through our Dentons Fifty Network, which is their national statewide network. For economic development support, they develop and implement a strategic engagement plan with economic development stakeholders. And again, their presence is very, very strong throughout the state of Georgia. Their list of connections is untouchable, in my opinion. And they can position Rockdale County as a competitive, business-friendly environment for new and expanding businesses, and advocate for economic incentives and funding opportunities at the state level. In addition, they provide public affairs and brand positioning. They can craft and implement a messaging strategy to position Rockdale County as a dynamic and forward-thinking community. They can highlight Rockdale's leadership and accomplishments through targeted storytelling, monitor public sentiment, and provide recommendations to enhance the county's brand. They can develop a media strategy to generate positive coverage for Rockdale County and engage with traditional and digital media outlets, including newspapers, TV, radio, blogs, and social media influencers. In addition, they can coordinate interviews and thoughtful leadership opportunities for county officials. As far as government relations, they can advocate for Rockdale County's priorities before state legislators, agencies, and regulatory bodies where they have, they have reaches across all parties, so they cross party lines. They can monitor and analyze policy developments that could impact Rockdale's initiatives and build coalitions and partnerships to advance legislative and regulatory goals. And the list of what they can do goes on and on. And this is at a competitive pricing point that you found online through the, through the posting. And all of this is, if, if we're going to invest that kind of money, I really think that we should consider that we have other players that may want to be a part of that process. And so I just wanted to share that with you.
I appreciate that, yeah.
For your consideration.
Um, in reference to what we just went through with Melissa, having the ability to do everything. And this new, this company here is pretty much doing the same thing that you said that, you know, she would do. What would be the difference? At one point, we, we don't need anybody to be our consultant, to do our PR, to do marketing for us because we have a marketing PR department. But because it's a different company that is well-known or met with you, or whatever the situation is, it's a possibility that we can consider that company. So my question is, do we need an outside consulting company at all, period? Or are we going to use our PR department that, our award-winning PR department that is well-capable of taking care of everything?
So I would say that this is a healthy discussion for us to fire up our PR department to get that information. I think you, there's a lot of talent in our PR department tonight. You're getting to hear a lot of this that is a surprise to you. And for that, I apologize, but I'm glad that we're having this because this is called a work session for a reason. And so I will say that I think that, if anything, maybe we would need some, an outside person to kind of look and help give us direction. Maybe that's a consideration. I would say the other thing is the relationship building at the state level. Probably wouldn't hurt for us to have a stronger presence. And while I'm working on some of those things, there are things, connections matter. And so that may be another consideration. And then the public-private work for the Sigmund Road project would be the third area that I could say, all right, it would help. I know that Economic Development Committee and the Development Authority are working right now actively on that piece. So I think that that three-tier approach to finding a solution is something that maybe they could not only meet with both of you, both of these companies, if we wanted, to target maybe those three areas and have a bid process to look at those areas. And maybe that would be a healthier, fairer way to go about reaching our goals. So...
So you said this group is a national group, this firm?
Yeah, they have a presence in, that's what their Connect Fifty is. But Dentons has a very strong presence at the federal level. They have offices in DC, they have offices in Atlanta, and they have a law firm plus lobbying in several other facets, public relations, crisis management, all of those things, so...
So, so that's good to get that overall look.
Right.
Georgia's Strategy Group has at least one of their people who are native to Rockdale County. So I think that brings a different perspective, a more intimate look at what needs to hap, you know, what could happen, not needs to, but could happen, what we could, you know, use that talent for. As well as they have broadcasting abilities and that kind of thing too. So I think, looking at both of them, looking at, I think if, maybe if we get a list of what public relations is comfortable doing, and look at what we might need outside consultants for, and decide how we're going to do that.
Okay. All right. So maybe if you could schedule time with all three of us so that we can work towards finding a more focused approach to what is needed would be great. Thank you, Director Mims. All right, any other questions? Okay. Very good. All right. So at this time, we have board comments.
Miss Hines, next. Yes, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate our meeting tonight. Very good, healthy.
Yes.
How you work things out in a work session. This week, our kids are on winter break, and I just want to remind the parents to make sure you give your kids vitamins, laxatives, like they used in the day. Clean yourselves out and make sure you get, you know, don't bring those bugs back to the school. Also, we have had a request for community involvement. And those people that want to sign up for committees, you can email Jennifer to get an application for that. And also, well, the sheriff has a food drive. If you're at home, and it ends at eight o'clock, if they're, if they still have supplies, but they are doing a food drive at the sheriff's office tonight. And that is it. Thank you.
Miss Hines?
So I too appreciated the meeting tonight. It's truly a work session where we can talk about it. This is what we did before the two of you were, actually took office.
Yes.
We were able to meet. And so it's healthy.
Absolutely.
And it's, it, to me, it's really exciting, the things that we can get accomplished by talking. And this is the, the medium that we can use to talk with, now. So I've appreciated that. One thing last week was the pastors' table, and someone mentioned that, oh, Melissa mentioned that earlier. It was excellent. It was really well-done. And I, I think, you know, the pastors that were there, especially the new ones that had never been there before, appreciated the opportunity to hear what the county can provide to... Okay, now, let me get my thoughts back together. That, to hear what the, the county can provide, the kinds of services that they may need for their congregations, but also the opportunity to network with each other. So if you were able to make it, then that was great.
Thank you.
And I think, I think we need to mention that that was a lovely funeral service on Saturday for your mother.
Thank you.
You know, it was pretty interesting to see all of your family and such a big, I had no idea that you had seven siblings.
I know. It's, that's why we had name tags.
I know, it was great.
Yes, we're intrigued by that.
Yeah, that was a great idea.
Thank you.
I thought it was really a nice service and a nice tribute to your mother.
Thank you.
Then the last thing I had was a Black History Month comment. So Captain America opened this past weekend. And Anthony Mackie is the, made history by portraying the new Captain America as the first African-American to portray that superhero. It was groundbreaking. It offered a refreshing and meaningful shift in the portrayal of superheroes. And as a black man assuming the role of Captain America, he represents hope, resilience, and the idea that anyone can be a hero regardless of race or background. So this was a historic moment for pop culture this weekend.
Very good. I feel like I might have been to the movies in forever, so maybe I'll have to make that trip to see him. That'd be great. Well, thank you very much for a great spirited debate. I think it says a lot about this community and our effort to provide and build trust and transparency with the citizens, for you to hear this aspect of our thought process and how we reach certain decisions. So we hope that this, as we move forward, we've looked at combining some of our work in voting sessions. And I, I hope that the public gets a better understanding instead of just us all voting on items, vote, vote, vote. This gives you some of the history and thoughts behind these decisions. And I think it also allows for us to work together as a team to not always agree on a vote, but to find different interest levels and passion areas that we are focusing on. So I think that is great. I did want to address an item that I heard earlier about the Planning Commission with the city and county slated to split our Planning Commission. I would say that we've worked very hard to be a unified community and work with the city and the school board. And so I too was a little surprised by the change that the city wanted to make. But no matter which way we go, if we could stay unified, that would be great. But if we do split, we'll make sure that we have the best qualified volunteers on that Planning Commission board. I do want to say that there are, the intent of this board is to make sure that we fill all of our boards with qualified people who are passionate about whatever area that is specifically the focus. So I know coming up, we are looking at appointments to the Keep Conyers-Rockdale Beautiful Committee. We have eight positions and appointments. We also are looking at the Water and Sewer Committee. That will also include stormwater, is what we've talked about.
Yes.
And that would give us a second focus area because that is a very important area for us to stay on top of, the, the moving pieces there. And that, what I mentioned and up for discussion would be appointing five members with two alternates. And we really want to build on that committee. That is a heavy topic. So there's a lot of research and understanding that's required for serving on that board. We do have some names of people that would be highly qualified, and we are still taking names at this time. But we also want to bring some youth to that board. And there would be two alternates for the learning process so that we could get people that can really carry that significant amount of knowledge forward and be able... and be able to fill in or serve as needed until their full appointment. So I think that would be excellent. And then as a committee, we could actually take that if we needed for some reason. I've been told by legal and Madam Clerk, we don't have to make it an authority. But I would say it's up for discussion for me. So, you know, we can see where that goes, but I'd rather go ahead and get that board appointed so they can get busy. There's a lot of very important topics in that arena that need to be addressed very soon. So again, Jennifer Rutledge is handling those, those applications for that board. And I feel like there's more.
It was the KCRB and the Water and Sewer and the Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, we still need one more. And even when we have positions that are filled, we still like to have applications on file. People sometimes have to step down, things happen, terms expire. So we like to keep that on file.
Okay, and so we have a lot of applications for the Board of Adjustment. So I think we will make sure that's shared with everybody so we can go ahead and make an appointment for the most qualified person out of those selections soon. So can we do it by next Tuesday? Is that possible?
Yes, I'll get that list here.
Okay, all right, that would be great. We have a Parks and Recreation-
Committee.
Committee.
Committee, right.
That will be formed, and we can look at that as another opportunity. And any, anything else?
I think that was it for the volunteers.
Okay, so that's a lot to get done.
It is.
But we're excited about it. And I do want to recognize in the audience tonight, some members of the team that has been working on the Business Innovation Committee. If you'll stand for us.
It's the two, it's the two years.
So it's got two functions, so it's got two functions wrapped into one. So we have members that work on the planning and zoning ordinances, and I saw Tami must have left and I didn't see her, planning and zoning ordinances. So that's Shannon Longino, Marshall Walker. And then the other section is for business innovation, so recruitment of restaurants and retail. And also, we're looking at shopping centers and how to not only help them partner with us to keep them clean and aesthetically beautiful, but also to make sure that we're aware of openings so that we can redirect from planning and zoning anybody coming in to open businesses. So anyway, thank you so much to our committee members that have helped with that. And then for our Citizens Financial Oversight Committee, we have Charlotte Geller here tonight. And that committee has been focusing on drilling down on P-card usage, a myriad, what?
Contracts.
Contracts.
Budget, looking at.
Yes.
All of our financial-
A very, very deep dive on those things. And they were chosen for their high level of skills. So I am excited to bring forward meeting updates in the upcoming meetings and notes that'll be provided to both of you. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. With that being said, I do want to thank everybody for their condolences, prayers for my family, and just well wishes. I mean, I've been just so impressed by the outpouring of support and messages, cards, everything. It's been overwhelmingly helpful in the healing process. So thank you. All right. At this time, do we have a need for executive session?
No, bottom chair.
Very good. At this time, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you for your time tonight.